Good evening and welcome to the first city council meeting of two thousand twenty-three for the city of Twalton. Thank, I'm sorry, the city council work session, get ahead of myself for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, welcome for joining us tonight. Uh, first item on the agenda for our work session. This is Twalton Shuttle Expansion and Kent Washington County Transit Investment Priorities. We'll have representatives of Ride Connection Washington County presenting this topic. Don't be shy, come on up. Want to go ahead and introduce yourselves to the council. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm John Whitman. I am the Service Planner with Ride Connection.
I'm Tantrine Berry, uh, with Ride Connection Service Planner.
And I'm Russell Parker, I'm a Transition Planner with Washington.
Welcome.
And, uh, us Ride Connection staff members were here to present on, uh, exciting news, which is that today we, uh, expanded the Twalton Shuttle and introduced a new service into the community. We'll be reviewing Ride Connection and our, uh, role historically in the community. Uh, as well as reviewing, uh, current operations, um, and then discussing, uh, the expansion that went into effect today. Next slide. Oh, oh, we have a clicker here. Let's see.
Point at the screen.
Uh, just a little overview on Ride Connection. We are a private nonprofit organization. We emerged out of a, a TriMet, uh, subcommittee in the, the late eighties, um, studying the transportation needs of older adults and people with disabilities. Um, and TriMet was, was founded as, or sorry, Ride Connection was founded as an independent organization soon after that. Our primary, uh, uh, our, our target audience, our customer base is older adults and people with this disabilities. We do quite a bit of elderly and disabled transportation in Twalton as well as, uh, the entire tri-county area. We'd also provide, uh, services for, uh, the general public as well. Uh, specifically for commuters, low-income populations, transit-dependent populations and others. Um, we do have a, a, a pretty large presence in, in Washington County. It's where we do the majority of our direct service. Whereas in Multnomah and Clackins County, it's largely our nonprofit and government partners providing the service. We have offices in Twalton, Beaverton and Hillsborough as well as Forest Grove. And we provide a, a, a range of services. Those include our community connector shuttles, like Twalton Shuttle. Um, but also Grove Link and Forest Grove, North Hillsborough Link and Hillsborough and the West Link as part of the rural area. Uh, we provide a number of shopping shuttles for older adults and people with disabilities in Washington County. Uh, demand response services, both in the urban and rural area, uh, getting folks from, uh, their home to a range of different trip purposes or, or destinations, uh, like medical, uh, services, shopping, recreation, uh, any number of trip purposes. We have a volunteer driver program. A lot of our Rock, Washington County services supported, uh, by volunteers. We don't have volunteer driver or, uh, driving for our community connector shuttles, but per, uh, a substantial part of our, uh, demand response services are volunteers. And finally, we maintain shared vehicle agreements where we'll let other nonprofit organizations, Washington County examples are, uh, Central Ultra or Silver Years Adult Daycare Center for Slavic Community. We allow them to use our vehicles when they're not in service, providing Ride Connection service. Uh, so the funding we receive, uh, to sustain these programs, uh, we receive, uh, both state and federal funding for elder and disabled transportation programs like STF and, uh, we receive, uh, federal fifty-three eleven funds for transportation for rural general public services. Um, and then our services like the Twalton Shuttle are supported with STIF statewide transportation improvement funds that we receive, uh, through Washington County, who's the, the direct recipient of those funds. Now focusing on the Twalton Shuttle, uh, I think you can look at our two thousand twenty-two rider survey, um, and it demonstrates quite a bit of its impact in the community. Seventy-five percent of riders use it as part of their commute to work. It's really integral, uh, for getting people from the west station or other transit stops, or, uh, maybe they're taking it from their home to work, uh, to get to work sites throughout Twalton where it might be difficult or impossible to walk. Maybe these people don't have, uh, a car of their own. Um, or, or just see the Twalton Shuttle as a convenient option. Seventy-one percent of these riders identify as transit dependent or car free. Ninety-six percent of them ride the Twalton Shuttle at least three days a week. We have a lot of repeat riders. Uh, and sixty-seven percent of shuttle riders, uh, are using it as part of a multi-modal trip, or at least another transit trip. Um, uh, with TriMet or other transit drivers. And I think the impacts, values and benefits of the Twalton Shuttle go far beyond just getting people from point A to point B. Uh, we have a list of bullets up here. I won't go through all of them, but, uh, the, we have seen that the Twalton Shuttle supports a number of, uh, community priorities, whether they're climate priorities or environmental sustainability, economic development, supporting public health and healthy communities. Um, and meeting, uh, various, uh, uh, social equity goals, um, of supporting vulnerable populations and their mobility. I'm going to pass, uh, things off to Tantrine Berry, who, uh, was the lead on, on planning the Twalton Shuttle extension. Uh, and she'll cover, uh, what went into effect today.
So these are some of, uh, I guess, previous routes because we started our soft launch today and, uh, new routes. The blue one is a modified Twalton Shuttle. It's very similar to our previous one. The only change we made was add the Twalton City Services. Do we have a pointer? Yeah, I'm not sure. Oh, is it to this one? Yep, it's called in City Services. We took off Spokane Court, uh, which was, um, a designated stop. It, it's still in the deviation area, but, uh, it's not a designated stop. The dash line here, that's the previous route. We, as you can see, this slight overlap with the green route, so we modified it. And this route now goes along Martin Azia Avenue. We made better access to Kaiser Parking Lot, so it's going on, like in the parking lot rather than just serving the Twalton Sherwood Road. Uh, better access to Marquee Living Center. Um, the Martin Azia Village Apartments, Fred Meyer, Twalton Library. And then this was the One Eater Coal Center before it heads back to the west station. That's on the red route. Also on the red route, um, the blue and the red route are technically commuter routes where they serve only peak services. So we added a lot of trips in between on the red route to serve the community. We've been hearing through outreach that we want something a little more than the commuter route. So that's why we added that on the red route. The blue route seems more like for work and employment, but the red route has some potential there for the community. So we've added that, um, to the red route. The green route is a new route and you can see here that it will make a connection to, um, Smart Service. Just east of, um, Stafford, um, near Stafford Road. And, uh, it will have some connection to the west station, for the west commuter train, but also to the other Twalton Shuttle routes. And then it'll have a connection to the Twalton Park and Ride so that it can connect with other TriMet buses, the intercity service to Point. And, um, the green line is basically an all-day service, um, Monday through Friday from five-thirty actually in the morning, going on all the way to like eight o'clock. Uh, it will serve the Bridgeport Park and Ride, the Twalton West Station, Nyberg Woods, the hospital, like Legacy Meridian, Rolling, uh, Hills Community Church, which houses various services like the Bolland Free Clinic, the Twalton School Pantry. We talked about, um, connections with, um, at the Twalton Park and Ride. Future expansion, uh, with Smart. And as I mentioned, this was a soft la- launch. We do have a kickoff event that, um, please accept this as a formal invitations that everybody come for this event. Uh, we'll try and email all council members, uh, to attend this, um, kickoff event. It's on January twenty-seventh at twelve o'clock. Um, you all can please attend. And then just wanted to highlight, uh, our CEO Julie Wilkie Thelmore and Debbie Wox. Debbie is in the community. She, um, works with the day-to-day operation, working with the, with the buses, um, and drivers. Uh, they couldn't come, this, um, they couldn't come today, but just wanted to highlight them. And then we have Dawn in my contact information. Add him to, to resume.
Thank you, Tantrine. Once again, uh, good evening. My name is Russell Parker. I'm with Washington County, um, and I did here tonight to talk to you about our investment priorities, uh, for transit for the next biennium. As well as a, uh, project we're doing with, uh, state transit bonds to, uh, improve some of the stops in the community in Twalton. So stepping back, um, Washington County is, uh, technically the, the transit service provider for the, uh, rural part of, of the county, so outside of the TriMet and Smart, uh, we help connect folks from outside of the, in the rural area part of the county into the, uh, urban part to connect with TriMet and Smart. Um, we also operate, uh, community connectors in areas that are not well-served by fixed road transit within the TriMet, uh, service district, including the Twalton Shuttle. And we partner with, uh, Ride Connection. They serve as our, uh, op- operator to, um, operate these shuttles in both the rural area as well as the, uh, urban area of our first last mile shuttles. Um, uh, through our work with Ride Connection, we're able to leverage, uh, other, uh, resources, including, uh, local, uh, state, federal and private sources of income, John mentioned, like the STF and the, and funds for its new disabilities. And we also have, uh, a lot of partnership with the community and ongoing arrangements, uh, through Ride Connections, so with the Erie Council on Aging and, yeah, Rolling Hills Community Church, Marquee Twalton, among other partners in the community within Twalton. So, uh, through a very, uh, robust public involvement process, as well as, um, the feedback of our transit advisory committee, we came up with our investment priorities for the next, uh, biennium. So you can sort of see here what we're planning on doing. Uh, we have plans to, uh, maintain our current services, uh, in the communities of Forest Grove, Hillsborough and, and Twalton. Um, but we're also looking to, um, enhance those services, including new weekday service in Cornelius. Uh, we want to, uh, provide more peak service in North Hillsborough and provide, perhaps change a route in certain parts of the to serve more employers in North Hillsborough. Um, as, uh, John and Tantrine mentioned, we have the Twalton Green Line Shuttle, which has, uh, launched today. And that's currently grant-funded through, uh, fiscal year twenty-three, um, that we got through a statewide, uh, grant. And then we're also planning on, uh, serving some new areas. So, uh, King City Durham, this would, um, repurpose the, uh, current King City Ride About Shuttle into a new connection on Durham Road between, uh, Bridgeport Village and King City. It's, uh, missing link currently in this part of the county in terms of transit, so really excited to be able to, uh, come in and serve that part of the community with this new connection. Um, we also have plans to serve, uh, the Cedar Mill Bethany area, potentially linking Sunset Transit Center to, uh, PCC Lockford in another area that's currently lacking good fixed route transit. Um, and then we're also planning on purchasing four new, uh, vehicles, shuttle vans to help, uh, operate these services. Um, so part of what we're doing in Twalton and as well as the, um, other parts of the county and our, uh, first last mile shuttle network, we received a grant from the, from the state, uh, statewide, uh, transition improvement fund discretionary grants to, um, improve the, the stops, the shuttle stops in, um, in our network. So what that's been involved doing is, uh, potentially, um, selling signage, um, new landing pads for accessibility. Uh, we're looking at, uh, potentially, um, adding shelters to benches. Uh, one of the locations that we were looking at was at the west station, um, because currently the, the current stop divisions there are pretty, uh, pretty constrained. Um, there isn't a ton of room for, um, enhancements or amenities such as, uh, seating or, um, lighting or, uh, cover from the, from the weather. So we were planning on potentially doing a, a new project there to install a new, uh, stop. Um, at that location, but it's currently on hold. We're looking to revisit this location as it's, serves as the hub of, of the Twalton Shuttle Network. All three lines would connect at the west station. So we definitely want to revisit it, but for now, we're just going to be doing some signage upgrades, um, around the rest of the system. So we have eleven stops identified for new signage. Um, and we'll be working with the city of, uh, Twalton on permitting for those, um, in the coming weeks. And we're also partnering with, uh, TriMet and Smart on a few shared stops at the green line, um, and the, uh, red line, I believe, we'll be sharing with. So that just basically involves putting stickers, um, on their, um, on their existing signs, um, to let folks know that Ride Connection also stops there, but we want to also add schedule information for folks who are looking to potentially use the service so that they know when the next, uh, shuttle is coming. And then here's just a map that kind of illustrates where we're looking at, um, stop improvements in the short term. So you can see Twalton West was, is still on the map because that was, um, originally proposed as a, uh, enhancement location and we still want to revisit that, but you can see other locations in green there. Um, the darker green colors represent new Ride Connection only stops. And then the lighter colors represent where Ride Connection and TriMet would share a stop. And so that doesn't really involve any sort of permitting with the city. It's just coordination with the transit service agency that already stops there. Like I said, uh, we'll be working with the city, uh, staff on permitting in the next few weeks. Um, and then we're hoping to begin construction in, uh, March of this year and completing construction by, uh, June. Very much.
Okay. All right.
Questions?
Council President, Councilwoman.
I have two. Um, I'm back on your map of the new green line and the red line. And I'm, I'm going to take Marquee Living Centers as an example because you've modified the red line. So if someone from Marquee needed to get to Legacy, the hospital, um, would they get on the red line and it looks like maybe go by the west station, get on the green line and then go out there? And is it the stop at the same spot? So it's easy to transfer from one to the other?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically a loop. So it would, they would go back to the west station and each
And then there'd be a green bus right there. Okay, so it's very easy. Okay. And then my other question, this is, um, the green line, which is great. It goes out to Rolling Hills Church, where we have a lot of services. But I know the food pantry is out there is, are people that are picking up food able to get food on the bus? I saw that rye roll.
Because that is part of, uh, what they are getting on the bus for. So we talked about it and there, we, there is no, like, till it becomes an issue, we not, um, to prevent people from using it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, um, just a couple of questions regarding your survey, just so we can understand how people's voice were listened or heard. Um, so you mentioned that you, uh, the seventy-five percent of the people were from Twalton. I'm just curious about the demographics and if that survey was done like in different languages or how was that? How was that done to hear people's voices?
Um, so the certainly the, I cited, that was our onboard rider survey that we're doing on the buses, uh, existing customers. We do that in both, uh, English and Spanish. Um, and I don't recall off the top of my head the exact demographics or like how many Spanish-language surveys that we got. Um, but that was the survey of those existing riders. At the same time when we were planning, uh, the Green Line and, uh, Tantrine, Phil, we could elaborate on this. We did do a community survey as well that was offered both online as well as outreach events. That was also done in English and Spanish. And that was more of an attempt to, uh, survey folks who might not be commuting into Twalton, but might have to take kind of those like more, uh, community-based trips, maybe the grocery store, maybe to get their kids to school or, or something along those lines.
And, um, this is a free service, right? Like the, okay. And, and also because I'm going to try to promote. Because I would really like the new stuff that's happening. But it's a free service and, uh, and for, if I want to put this on social media, where do they, what can, what link can I just give them and say, hey, click here so you can see the information that, um, that's coming up for the new road and the new schedule?
Yeah, if you go to writeconnection.org and then services, uh, it should be under community connectors. We could actually send you a link.
Okay. Um, the other question I had was, um, is it, is it ready to share this information with the public? Because I know you did a soft Yes. launch. Okay. Um, okay, so that's basically all I have.
It is ready and we started, uh, we started today, even though
Yeah.
we should kick off a event. Yeah.
We should have a soft opening.
Yes.
At the break.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Uh, the new line is exciting and I know a lot of people are interested in those services, so appreciate it and need them. Um, you had mentioned the green line, the times, but how often does it, will it be running?
I'm not sure. I would have to see the schedule. It's online, but it's basically going back and forth. That same bus is actually going from Rolling Hills, going to west, going to the Twalton Park and Ride and back.
So it's pretty much continuous service?
It's continued service. I have a breaks, um, I have a meal breaks. It's pretty much on.
Wonderful. And then, um, we have so much stuff in this commuter service historically. So I'm just like, do I have this right? And so there's two of those lines that are continuous service and just one that's, um, that's, um, for work times. Okay. And then my other question was, um, around amenity. Well, first of all, do you have any idea around the west station? Delay, are we going to call it? Uh, how long it's going to be until we can get back to it?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, we're looking at, um, different locations within the park and ride, um, area itself, so it wouldn't be on the public right of way. It would be in the park and ride, which is owned by ODOT. Um, and so we have been looking at different locations in that, um, in that site, but weren't able to come up with a, a final decision on that. We do want to come back to it soon. We have justified for a second round of discretionary grant funding from the state to more stop in essence. And we want to make sure that the west station is, uh, included in that. So it might be, maybe, uh, a year or two before we can maybe get back. We want to.
Okay, ODOT. Um, and then, um, you were talking about amenities. I mean, of course, my concerns are for a lot of people that ride, have disabilities and need a place to sit or older. We all know there's been a lot of sick people, so having cover is really important, um, for our vulnerable population. So I just want to advocate for that. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was we do litter blitzes here can often, in one of the places that we find a lot of trash and cigarette butts are at bus stops in places that people are waiting for the bus. And I've seen very specific design containers, um, in other communities like Lake Tahoe or different places where there be more mindful around the environment or places for people to put their cigarette butts. And I was curious if you guys have talked at all about receptacles for cigarette butts for, um, bus stops? Um, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. We've, uh, we've talked to other, um, localities in, uh, in the service in the county. Uh, Banks, for example, has, uh, existing shelter. They have a trash can and they're, um, we're looking at replacing their shelter because it's, it's over a decade old. And so they want to maintain that, um, that receptacle there. The issue is that we need to, to, for us to be able to do that, we need to, uh, potentially come out with an agreement with the city on some sort of maintenance program, some day-to-day like litter cleanup or trash can cleanup or power washing. So that's sort of been the, um, I don't want to say holdup, but it's something that requires a conversation with the city on to make sure that it comes through because otherwise stops don't get maintained and they fall into that. So, uh, I know Ride Connection and the county were, they're very interested in having a conversation, but that, that will be what it will take to potentially have.
And these are very specific receptacles because it wouldn't be good to throw your cigarette butt into the trash.
Oh, yeah. I feel like separate, like a receptacle and then like maybe something around it or separate that.
Okay, yeah, because I've seen these and they, I mean, I can't imagine, they're tall like pyramids and I can't imagine that they would fill up in five seconds. So, um, anyway, thank you. I'm excited. Thank you very much.
Other question? Uh, there's a couple of questions for me. Um, the fiscal year twenty-three, you said, so fiscal year twenty-three is through June of this year? So what happens, John?
Um, the, Washington County is part of their, uh, kind of planning process for the statewide transit um, and through their, their transit advisory committee, um, has programmed the Twalton Green Line expansion into fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. As I don't know if you have anything to
No, that, that's right. Yeah. So the, the grant was used to launch service, but we're paying on ongoing operations with the budget through the fiscal year funds.
The base of the HB two thousand seventeen dollars that
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, not full in fund. It's the regional coordination fund.
Right. Try and make convenes those meetings.
Sold out that money and yeah, we do that. So.
Right. And those are coming up pretty soon, aren't they? Because I remember Chris, that from Ba, you mentioned it coming up.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And, and that, we actually are also about to, uh, consider the, uh, the city pressure there too. So that stop enhancements, that base that I've mentioned will also be, uh, talked about as well, as well as a micro-transit pilot that we're, uh, currently going after and, uh, funding for.
Okay. Cool. And the second question is the changes in the red line. How are you going to get that word out to the folks that the changes have occurred? You know, the route, route you had is gone, but here's a new route. You know, especially for the folks in the residential areas who've been looking forward to this. Are you, uh, promoting this to the community?
One thing that we did was on the existing, uh, on the people who are using the existing route, we put a little, um, sheet of, you know, notice on the bus and we actually, the drivers handed it to all the riders just so that they have a copy of the new schedule. Um, but other, no, other would, we have an open house, um, like a virtual open house where people can actually go in, but it's on the bus. Everything is, um, through that website interface.
And one of the things, this might get it. So when you start giving the formal stops with signs, a lot of folks don't even know the shuttle's by because it's very hard to spot a stop. Um, so that, you know, once you get some signs up with the, the schedules that are more noticeable, I think that'll help. A lot of folks still, you know, don't realize the red line runs. Uh, they see the blue line a lot because it's going from the west into our employment zones. For the red line, they're really not so sure. And then a lot of folks are, don't know that it's free. Or they think it's just for employees to go back and forth. So, uh, we got to do a better job with messaging and getting it out to folks. Because especially the red line, you know, going down Martin Azia, that's going to be, you know, a very big deal. Uh, eventually I'd like to expand out. We've got, we've got the blue line going down Twalton Road, which isn't bad, but that's only during, you know, employment times, but at, at least it's something to get you that, that last mile that we all talk about from the west station, the seventy-six bus line.
And I would want to mention, um, during presentation that even where we have signs already, the falls out, they're pretty meticulous or so we're definitely trying to do
Prominent. You like neon or orange or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't miss.
You want to have a lead sign that gets in both directions here. That makes no, you know, suicide.
Yeah, because one of the things I noticed a lot that we have the Welcome to Art Walk signs, kind of look like your signs.
It's true.
So you can, you know, which one's which. Uh, other question? Right?
That's that conversation. And I guess the other thing around clarity of helping with use. There's these different things that people can connect with. Is there an easy way for people to understand when buses from other, like when the TriMet bus connects with this bus and do we link it to our website too? And is there a way that things are integrated around, um, ease of use for riders?
I think most, I mean, Ride Connection does use GTFS data and it's Google Maps. If anybody searches like connection from one place to another place, they would get that connection depending on the time, but those are all like TriMet, uh, Ride Connection, Smart has, has Google Maps.
Well, you're going to have to wait. How long are you going to have to wait and all that?
And I will say that, can I?
Yeah.
That on our website, under there, there's a, when you look on how do I? And it says, take public transportation. You click on that. It says, where can I go from Twelton on public transportation? And it includes all of the lines, but it also says for local trips in Twelton. There's also the Twelton Shuttle operated by Ride Connection. If you click on that, it has the maps and the, the marketing. So it, it's a start to integration.
Yes. No, I like that. And I think I'm looking for as many bells and whistles right now as we can. So I'm just for people that are already using the service. But for people that, like I would, I'd consider using some of these things that make more sense now, especially with this new line for me. And it opened it up to people who hadn't considered or hadn't really needed to use it that might want to use it. Thanks.
And then one last question popped in my head. So going down towards Rolling Hills Church, the last trip, because I'm thinking about the Brolin Free Health Clinic and the food pantry. And their hours, does that give them enough time to do with, you know, get the services they need and get back to the core if you will?
That was one of our concerns. Is it late enough? Is it going to be? Yep, it definitely does. Ends at eight, 10. And I think their timing, I don't know exactly what time it gets. I think it's like.
Wednesday, Thursday.
It does match up.
Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you all for coming tonight. This is very exciting and I'll be there for that little ride on the 27th.
Thank you.
All right, move on to our next item, the 2023, 2024 council committee assignments. We'll do that first. So in front of you, you've got a sheet of paper with the yellow heading on top that pretty much resembles kind of sort of my spreadsheet that was flying through the ether over the weekend. So that we can make this more efficient and picking assignments. So on for Council Gonzalez, who's new to the council, each counselor has additional duties assigned that they sign up to represent the city on different committees throughout the region, whether it's Washington County or Clackamas County. We usually have many of these committees either have a primary and alternate or just a primary. So over the weekend, a spreadsheet went out to the counselors asking what committees they were interested in serving on for the next two years. So I just want to go ahead. We'll just start at ARB and work our way through. I think you all have a copy of the spreadsheet. So the counselor Hillier was interested in coming to the primary on ARB. Is anyone else, is anyone okay with that? Council Hillier, you're still on board? We got Council Hillier for ARB. For Arts, Council Brooks would like to remain on Arts. She's been on for the last few years and I see no problem with that. Is it okay with everybody? All right. The Core Area Parking District Board will be a new person. And Council Reyes expressed interest in being in the primary net. Are you still on board with that?
Yeah.
Right. This is way better than the years that passed that we did this. All right. So the council, the council committee on advisory appointments. There are three counselors on that and several people expressed interest in that. But it looked like we, I settled on, but you know, this is open to discussion that Council Pratt and Council Reyes would remain. And Counselor Saco would join them as the third counselor. Is our folks okay with that? Sure.
I just want to say that. Well, first of all, just for context, because a lot of people weren't around when I first started as a counselor. It's just me and Council Reyes and the mayor at this point. But we had a shortage of people serving on committees. So I was on a lot of committees. So I just don't want people to think that I'm like a committee hoarder or something like that. And I want to be really clear on that. That being said, serving on the advisory appointments committee for me has been a really a privilege and a pleasure. I've talked about it often when we share, working with Counselor Reyes and Counselor Pratt. We worked, I thought, very, very well together. And I enjoyed our time working together, Counselor Pratt and Counselor Reyes. And also I think that it's a really great opportunity for other people to have as well. So I hope that you have as much fun on it as I did.
Thank you.
That brings us to the Science and Technology Scholarship Committee. We've, Council Hillier is already on it. And but Counselor Saco also expressed interest in that. Is that, we went back forward, is it a primary or alternate? Or do we have both counselors providing?
I asked Jeriann and she said it's one plus an alternate, but I think in times past, like both have, have gone.
Yeah, I've seen both.
I don't think there's a problem with that.
All right. So does that sound good with Council Hillier remains and we add Counselor Saco? All right. Fun one, Clackamas County Coordination Committee, the C4. Council Pratt would like to remain on that and seems like everyone was okay with that.
And I need an alternate though.
You have to have an alternate.
I can continue to be your alternate.
All right. C4 Metro Subcommittee, we have Council Pratt as the, again, be suggestion. Council Pratt as a primary and Council Reyes as the alternate.
It's a morning, Wednesday morning meeting, like seven to nine thirty, once a month.
A day in person?
No, they're on Zoom. And I think we're going to have some C4 meetings in person, but these they want to keep online because nobody wants to drive early in the morning.
Are you okay with Council Pratt and Reyes?
Yeah, I'd like to, but I have a.
All right. So next up is the C4 tolling subcommittee, Counselor Gonzalez. You know what you're in for. All right.
I usually go to that and sometimes they, they kind of let everybody in. So I don't want that to be an issue just because it's a small committee. And so just so you're aware, I'm not taking your voice. Yeah, especially with the tolling.
All right. Next item is the Metropolitan Area Communications Commission, otherwise known as MAC. And Counselor Gonzalez has stepped forward to be the primary in that. Okay, Regional Water Providers Consortium, that'll be, Bridget will keep that also because she's on leadership of that.
I chair.
All right. Then we have WACA, otherwise known as 911. And Counselor Hillier has said she'll take that position. Are we okay with that? The Washington County Coordination Committee, this is for the alternate owner only. The mayor serves on the, on the committee, especially since I'm now chair of it. And I have Counselor Gonzalez would like to be my alternate.
Yes, thank you.
You're just a glutton for punishment.
I'll tell you, I have been an alternate for this one as well and the mayor doesn't miss too many, but enjoy it when he does.
All right. We did have the Washington County PAB and Counsel Brooks, again, is in leadership and has been here so, for so long. She'll retain that position. WEA, I am the primary as mayor, but there are times where I don't make the WA meetings and they're at ODOT 30, usually via Zoom. Every once in a while, they are at the Beaverton City Hall. But Counsel Reyes expressed interest in being my alternate. And. And our last one is the Lamont River Water Coalition. And this position, Counselor Saco said she'd like to retain as primary. That's it. That was easy. And then as far as the future needed to be formed, the idea, the idea committee, we're talking about February, March-ish. Remember, there was never a formal membership roster created as a part of the output of that committee. So we'll look at that when it comes before us and decide who's going to represent the council then. Right, Counsel Brooke and Counsel Ray.
Will that committee have an alternate?
We don't know yet.
Yeah.
Changing the name of a committee to a little bit more remem, like memorable. For instance, a council committee and advisory appointment. On advisory appointments, that one for me is really, I'm just wondering if there's paperwork or something I need to fill out or something changed the names, maybe. I don't know. It's not advisory or city.
You don't like the initials?
I don't like the initials and I think it's really long and it's. Even if I would say CCAA, it still is a lot.
Is that in our ordinances or charter writing?
Resides in code or let us take it back and, and bring you back some more.
Because I mean, they came up, the idea committee, so come on.
I do have a question. And so I have two principles and one alternate only. Is, are we trying to have three principles for each council?
Right. And that's where, when this idea committee rolls out, I might be interested in serving on that.
Thank you.
Sure. Was way easier. All right. So next is the meeting agenda review.
Can I just say what we will, we will take this back and fill it in and then get with the, the representatives that, that staff these committees and they'll be in touch with you.
Exactly. I know the letters we sent to Washington County.
Washington County for MAC, for WACA, for, yeah, all of those. So we'll make all of those arrangements and then make sure that you're on the roster and that you're getting information.
Sure. All right. So the next thing we do, again, this is Counsel Gonzalez's first meeting. We review the agenda of the city council meeting. That's a concurrent about 10 minutes. It's usually questions that you might have or if you have concerns about something that's not consented, that it's a council's prerogative. If they don't want something that consent, you can ask to have it removed and heard in detail later in the meeting. So this is that, at this point, I usually ask people, any questions on the council agenda that we're going to have here in a few minutes? Or anything on consent agenda that they'd like to have questions on?
I do have one question on, on what you just referred to. Yep, on the consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we're talking about the, we're going to be potentially, and you'll have to work, see if I fit. I did have questions. I wasn't part of the council in the prior, so, but I do have questions on the potential passage of that for for the, is it for the?
Republic.
The Republic, yes. And so I had a questions, more questions in reference to that. So in that instance, what I say, what would I say to?
Your death to have item number five, resolution number 5664-23, remove its agenda and heard later tonight.
I think we're just going to leave it as it is then.
Because there's sometimes there's something where there's things, some people think it's, because these are things that are considered routine. Then sometimes there's something where you go, it's not that routine. I'd rather have a full discussion or, you know, do something like that. And that's what that's for, to give you that option.
I think I will, we would just leave it as it is and we're okay.
All right.
I have one thing to that.
Sure.
To, because I know for myself, sometimes I have a question on the consent agenda, but I don't need it removed. It's just a simple question that I ask and I get the answer from my fellow counselors or Sherwin. So if there's something that is, you know, that's a simple question, don't be afraid to ask.
Thank you for that.
All right, someone's okay with the agenda consent? Right. Let's see, showing back up.
Do you have doing the pledge?
I think we'll start it up again at position one, which is going to be Counsel Reyes. For clean again for the new year. And with that, we have not a lot of time. So at this time, Counsel Gonzalez, what we usually do is go down the dais with updates of what we've been up to as far as city council related meetings, things that are happening in the city. And we limit that to about three or four minutes to each person. So we'll try to get as many as we can here. Then at the end of the council meeting, if we, if we don't get everybody, we'll just continue it. So I'll start right now with Counsel Hillier. Okay. So would you rather, Counsel Brooks adds, if we could have a break? So you want to just move this after the city council meeting? Because it seems like it's going to be a short meeting anyway. All right. So we'll shift this to the end of the city council meeting that begins in five minutes. So I'll go ahead and close this work session, give people a break. We'll be back at seven.